Thank you. As part of the board's professional development, the board is doing a book study. And the name of the book is Excellence Through Equity: Five Principles of Courageous Leadership to Guide Achievement for Every Student. And our board, over the last couple of weeks, have read the introduction and the first three chapters. The book is written and edited by Alan Blankenstein and Pedro Noguera, with the board by Archbishop Desmond Tunel. And so I'm going to turn it over now for the board to have discussion about their book study.
I thank you all for agreeing to participate in this. And I felt that it was a good idea for us as we're having an update today on the information sessions with the freshman curriculum restructuring, our upcoming town hall, and our board goals, all in alignment to start spending some dedicated time during our meetings to discussing issues on racial equity in education and getting some various sources to be able to, you know, make comparisons and to increase our learning. And so the, I will open it up to, I'm looking at our time, if we could spend 10, 12 minutes, just having a kind of a preview of people's impressions and anything that kind of resonated and stood out. And if we could think about this in terms of for our future discussions, how we'd like to move from here, what things we'd like to dig into deeper, if there are other resources or this Spurs folks that want to come in to discuss things with us, things like that. So just hoping this can be an introductory discussion as we do this more systematically and regularly. Anyone like to start?
Sure.
I'd talk.
So I appreciate doing this with you folks. It's good to learn together. I have an ask just before we get into everything, which is there's considerable references at the end of each section. And if the administration or anyone has any, you know, of those references that they feel are, you know, I'm sure they're all worth going to, but if there's some that are, you know, best to further read, that would be appreciated out of the references listed. With that said, you know, my take on chapters one through three is that no, there are no two that are the same. So, you know, the journey that any district takes, you're on your own journey. You know, so as I'm looking at it and saying what's different, what's, you know, what's common, what are the issues? I have a personal knowledge of Brockton, Massachusetts. My roommate was from there. And so I know that district. And, you know, as I look at that, they were actually a majority, you know, so they were a majority that was black and brown students. So it's a different type of situation than we have. So it peaks me what, you know, what cultural, you know, centering they had, that's a question I had. The one that obviously seems to me that is more like us, at least demographically, was Rockville, New York, just because of, you know, in terms of the racial mix being the same, yet as you look at what they've done, and you look at their path, a little different path in terms of where they're going, you know, starting in middle school, you know, so the importance of, you know, how this goes beyond high school, looking at things by, you know, whether it's across disciplines or by cohorts. So these are all just different ways of addressing it. And a gradual approach, as they, that's kind of what was noted. And the thing I really, and then hiring teachers who believe in what the district believes in. So, I mean, through all of this, culture is just, the word that just came out in my mind is, in each of these cases, what was the culture, the learning culture that they had? Because the, you know, the racial makeup, they were all different, but it's a school. And so how did they address, you know, learning culture is what I kind of had. So I'll cede the floor to others.
I will just say that I was fairly intentional in giving us these first three chapters and knowing that there were, in particular, the Brockton district having a very different racial makeup and also socioeconomic makeup. And it's an illustrative point as to districts that typically find this work, the buy-in is a little easier to get because there are, the decision to use resources to lift all boats, there is a different sensibility about it. But it reflects some of the issues of race that we've been talking about, that's a minority in our community. We'll get to hopefully chapter 11, which, the title of which is "Facing the Facts in Your Fears," focusing on equity propelled us from good to great. And it is about a district much more similar to ours in terms of resources. So it's just a way to have the, see some of the commonalities, but also to have a discussion about what it looks like when you're kind of lifting all boats. Ralph, you're leading it.
Yeah, just because the good, the great thing. So it's interesting. One of the resources I refer to you is the Each and Every Child Report that this book cites, actually, which is the federal commission that I served on, that has Linda Darling-Hammond, who was also in here, Michael Fulon worked with us on that, Estebas Solberg. In fact, that's Solberg's PowerPoint for what he talks about, the Finland system. A couple of things that I think we can draw out of this for our discussion. I mean, number one, if they say it once in this text, they say it about five times. And that is, "Schools committed to equity don't do so by limiting opportunities for the most advanced students." And Jackie, that gets to the point you just made, right? It's about going from good to great. Right now, we have a very good school. We want to be a great school. And how do you get there? It's that all your students are having that great learning experience and opportunity to excel predicated on their own intellectual capacity. And getting there, when you have a racially mixed environment, requires identifying barriers in your school to specific children having that opportunity to learn and eliminating those barriers. And that gets to your culture point, Tom. I mean, we're not going to have the luxury of hiring a whole bunch of new teachers to change the culture. Our faculty is an established faculty. We don't have significant turnover. It's a good place to work for a faculty member. So we will have to focus on identifying barriers within our system and providing appropriate professional development for our faculty, administrators, and staffs. But also, if you read the second chapter, Michael Fulon's work is brilliant. And Michael Fulon is probably one of the leaders, and mostly, he really informed our work on the Each and Every Child Report that we did. I've, you just don't want him to speak at an event because he's very boring, but he's a brilliant, brilliant guy. And it's that capacity building for the system, the capacity building. And that takes a number of different paths. More and better collaboration among faculty, particularly faculty that have really good approaches to pedagogy, that are culturally appropriate, et cetera, is one of the best ways to change the culture in the system. And we really ought to look for ways to build that collaboration with teacher leaders in conjunction with professional development, if in fact ultimately we want to change the culture here and get to the point where there isn't that statistically meaningful correlation between race, ethnicity, and predicted outcome. And that's, that's the stated goal of our board. So there's a lot there that I really love. The one, the one nit I will make, because I can't not make a nit when I read stuff like this, and this is what I work on. In the introduction, they conflated two theories that they shouldn't have. They conflated a meritocracy with a competitive approach. They are not the same. So NCLB was flawed in design for more than one reason. But one of the core reasons was it was a competitive approach to public education. So it just assumed getting schools competing with each other would generate better outcomes for all students down the road. For a competitive model to work, you need winners and losers. You don't want loser schools, you don't want loser kids. It's really not what you want as a model for a public education system. Meritocracy is not about that. A meritocracy, if you get there, is a school system where every kid succeeds or fails just based on that kid's intellect and effort, period. And the other factors that we know shouldn't play a role, race, ethnicity, gender, religion, name it, don't play a role. So meritocracy is not a paradigm to move away from. It's really still the ideal, but most educational institutions have created racially disparate barriers for all children to actually be able to succeed academically, in other words, just based on their effort and on their intellect. So that's where I have a nit. They really conflated two very different approaches to changes in education. And meritocracy is not about a competitive model. And a competitive model has failed, and it's failed internationally. You should, every nation, so if you talk about the PISA exams, which are the big international tests.
I could do this all night.
But no, just real quickly, I like competitive models just failed. Every nation that adopted it in 2000, Japan, New Zealand, Australia, Great Britain, us, 10 years later did worse on the PISA exams than the nations that did, like Finland, which went to Michael Fulon's approach of building the capacity of their faculty and building collaborative and better culture systems within their institutions. So there's a better model to get there. It is the Michael Fulon model, the competitive model that worked.
Okay, thank you. And I would just, in that chapter, folks, looking at the table 2.1 about whole system change, I think that's something that could lead to additional discussions. Anyone else?
I'm afraid to follow Ralph. I just had a couple of, just a couple of observations that struck me as I went through it. I guess this one in general, one was, to understand how I think about things, I'm always comparing where I am or where we are to what I'm reading, trying to understand. One of the focuses that came through to me in here was the core and central focus was on learning, right? It wasn't necessarily on the barriers entering the way of learning, but the core and central focus was on learning and then breaking down the barriers for all to get there. And I reflect on our own situation, and what comes to mind is, do we have enough focus on learning here? Meaning, are our educational outcomes in front of our face all the time, and we know what we're driving for, and everybody sees it clearly?
Yeah.
And then that helps us break down the barriers. And I just, that's slightly different than the primary focus on breaking down the barriers. Does that make any sense? And I think it's a small adjustment, but it's just how I reflected on the readings in the sections in general.
And I think this is, because I underline this for myself, that it is crucial to declare that the moral imperative of all students' learning is a core goal of the system, and that the realization of that is having authentic measures of progress. And that change is fearful for everybody, but the way that we get to that is if we have that. And I referenced our model, you know, all of those things that, you know, it is a slight shift, but it gets, I think, to the heart of the equity work. So it is, it's worth.
I think it gets to the heart of it, but it also lays the focus out, is you have to understand where, how we're doing on learning, how the different groups are doing on learning. Everybody needs to understand it. Focus on that as your outcome, and then figure out how to break the barriers down to achieve the outcome, rather than focus on the barriers and not with enough attention on the outcome.
And I would say that with the upcoming discussion on the information sessions, it feels as though we're moving in that direction. So it's helpful to.
Anyway, that's my one comment.
But the good news, just one thing on the good news.
No, Ralph, please, we have.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it.
No, you're not.
Yeah, I am. You don't have the right to cut a board member off, and so I'm gonna say it.
Oh, my gosh.
The one point that's really, we need to emphasize that we don't enough, is that an equity initiative doesn't take the top down. It's not about reducing the rigor at the top. And I think if we want our community to come along, they have to hear that loud and clear.
Would others care to speak in the remaining two minutes that we have for this discussion?
I'm enjoying it very much, inspired by it. I've moved past chapter three because someone, I think Gina said it was a real fast read than it is. One of the things that really stuck out, so many good things, but one was expectations, expectations of students, also of teachers, to not limit ourselves, the learning that needs to happen among everyone. That it's the adults in the equation are so important. And also the comparison, like Tom, at the top, we often compare ourselves to Evanston Township, and okay, that's fine, there's some basis for that, but ultimately, it's the people in this building who are unique and who bring, you know, Dr. Curtis Adams is our first superintendent who's brought this before us. There's no one like her out there, exactly. And so I think it's important to be really, to not let past be a predictor, because that's not our past. So anyhow, I appreciate it, and I hope that the Oak Park Library gets so much of these books too, because, you know, in terms of, you know, have other people read this. So just because I've really been, it's been illuminating. I've heard a lot of these things and all that, but it's helped put it together, and so I appreciate that we're doing this.
I just wanted to add that in our last meeting at the Committee of the Hall, when we had the discussion about this, that there was a big conversation around community and bringing community along with us. And so I don't know to the extent that we've invited community into the conversation or into the reading of this book as we read this book, but I feel like, because the way that our conversation was last time, it seems like it would be really beneficial, as many people can get on board with reading this, especially, especially those that don't, especially those that might be missing the understanding that equity is not a zero-sum game.
Right.
So I think that it's extremely informative in that way. So thank you.
I appreciate. I was hoping, because we tested out, we're kind of a test people, and then we can broaden it if people are medable to that.
Yeah, I mean, so the one thing that I was sort of, and I think it's partly because we did them according to Foundation Early Childhood Fellowship recently, Gina and I did those, but I'm thinking about this like from a whole system view. I was at one of the community discussions in February four, where Greg pointed out, you know, we, our students are high school students, so that's what we're looking at. We have to sort of compartmentalize it that way. But clearly, this is much bigger than just this building. So I'm just sort of trying to think about ways that we can kind of bring along our theater districts to make sure that we're all sort of moving in the same direction, because our impact will be exponentially greater than if it's just us with 14 and up. So that's sort of, that's what I've been thinking about recently.
So try equity board perhaps.
Exactly, but it.
I have some frustrations, yes.
Yes, no, absolutely. I mean, I think that is the direction that we need to be going in, but I also think that there needs to be some buy-in, you know, at every level.
Okay, so next steps, I was hoping that if we could make this practice of, like, perhaps every other month, kind of check in and be able to have a group discussion, would that work for everyone?
Maybe even more often, I think it's so important, maybe even every month, but, you know.
To add in the whole?
You've got the bigger picture, perhaps, with the agenda setting.
I just have to check with Joylin because sometimes the agenda is long. And I don't want us to have this discussion at 11:30.
I hear you.
Okay, thank you all very much.
The next item. The next item is a follow-up to the community meetings regarding the freshman curriculum During the board meeting on August 24th, the administration presented a review of the freshman curriculum evaluation that was conducted in the 18th, 19th school year. At the conclusion of that presentation, the administration announced a two-year plan to detract freshman courses in English, Math, Science, World Language, and to limit the first year of courses in Math to begin in the fall, from beginning in the fall of 2021. In the days after the August 24th presentation, the administration then announced that we would conduct four community conversations. We actually had five, because we did one for community council as well, regarding the restructuring of freshman curriculum. One was at the high school, and one was at all of our primary theater district middle schools, and as I said, as well as community council. In preparation for the board's discussion about the restructuring of curriculum, this memo provides, this is some of the things that we saw, and we felt that, and we want to thank, first of all, let me say that, the board members who attended those sessions. It was good to see you in the audience, kind of learning with us as we present and get feedback from our community. So several things emerged from the questions that were in comments that we received, and concerns, let me say that, during our conversation from our community members. One of the first things was, many people expressed concern that there were private group comments about their specific children and how they felt about that. And there were also people who support the change in instruction and what we're doing. Some of the other questions were the interpretation of data, and whether or not it was, the data was actively focused or reflecting student performance, and whether the data from Evanston was clear. I do want to say in this setting that while, yes, Evanston has done this, we are not doing this because of Evanston. We are not trying to replicate Evanston. Are we learning from Evanston? Yes, we are. But we're also learning from other school districts, as you've seen in the text that you're reading, that there are other school districts that have embarked upon this. And I think the perception is that we are mirroring Evanston, but we are learning from that, but we are not doing this because of them. The other question was, which our third question, was focused on teacher preparation for heterogeneous grouping classes. And finally, concerns also questioned the extent to which the district's approach was successfully challenged our high-performance students. I think, Mr. Montier, you kind of referenced that. It is not our goal to water down anything, but to provide a rigorous curriculum across all content areas for all of our children. Currently, our freshman curriculum teams, as you've heard in many of those sessions, are identifying professional development. In fact, last week, we had a gallery walk where every single teacher in this building, every single educator, every single staffer, including myself, got to go in and identify, face up on quadrants, what we wanted to learn about to move our curriculum forward. And there were some great thoughts put into that. It was exciting. I waited till the end of the day to just go in and see what our teachers are asking for as it relates to professional development. But what we found is, they really want to focus on designing a rigorous curriculum that focuses specifically on the work they're doing. Now, that's designing the pilot. We also know there's some confusion about what a pilot means, and from my experience, when you do a pilot, you're developing units of study. Those units of study hit the high-performing aspect of instruction, the students are going to, individually, going to get it regardless, and those students will need additional support. It also gives you lessons and resources to support all those levels, as well as formative assessments and summative assessments. When you do a pilot, a subset of teachers are actually doing that work, and then they come together and dialogue on what worked or didn't work. This approach was helpful, and they learned from each other before they finally tweak and formalize the program. So I wanted to clear that up, because I know there's some confusion too about what a pilot entails. Our goal is, there was also confusion about my language at the first meeting about, we're going to do this, and that I am charged by the board. That is true. I am charged by the board to implement the strategies and objectives in the strategic plan. And if you look in the strategic plan back to the 2017, 18th school year, 16th, 17th school year, it was written in there that by a certain point in time, we would provide a freshman curriculum that was rigorous for our students. The other piece that we did not say that day that also added some confusion was the process tied to our board policy. Our board policy does say that administration should present a pilot program to the board for consideration and or approval. It also says, through our curriculum review process, the board has to approve that. So our goal is, in April of this year, if we work hard and continue on the trajectory that we are, we will come to the board with the recommendation for the pilot. We will continue work and won't stop and then get the curriculum done, so that we can come to the board in our regular curriculum review process in the fall of 2020 for implementation in the following year. This is a summary of what we learned, and we wanted to just have an opportunity for the board to then, to have some dialogue about what they've learned. Before I open it up for discussion, I do need to say that if you ask us about specific data points and some of the things that our research is doing, this is our research year. This is the year we're still studying, doing some actual research processes. So we may not have all of those answers, but that is part of what we're learning as we do this work. With that, we'd like to open it up for any questions that you have. I do want to say this is in compliance with transformative education. Oh, the strategic, oh.
No.
Oh, the strategic plan and district policy. Do you have any questions, comments? We're opening this session. Want to be listening?
I'm gonna turn off.
Questions, comments?
Just to support what the district is doing, we went through a meta-analysis of the most recent research on detracking and the peer-reviewed studies. And I think one of the better ones was done by a skeptic of detracking, Rick Heinischek. He's the head of the Hoover Institute at Stanford University. He was actually on this commission. He, he's a very conservative thinker in education. He's pro-choice, pro-voucher, he's, that's his worldview. He did a very, very serious analysis of detracking efforts in OECD countries around the world and the U.S., but other industrialized nations. And what he found, and I don't know if you can see these figures, they're all negative. So, and I'll make a copy of this available to everyone, but basically, learners in every percentile, from the lowest up to the highest, perform worse in homogeneous settings than in heterogeneous settings, overall, statistically. That's the data. So his point was, the argument for not detracting, detracking, is that you will somehow disadvantage high learners, high achievers. But the research doesn't support that. There are no efficiency gains from tracking for high learners. And in fact, there's a statistically meaningful loss. And that's across all OECD nations, and that's pretty compelling stuff. And for Rick Heinischek, and I'm just going to read his quote, "The results consistently indicate that early tracking and tracking increase inequality in achievement." And, let's see, another comment that I thought was really great. He said, "The results suggest that countries lose in terms of distribution of outcomes and also levels of outcomes by pursuing tracking policies. And it's incumbent on those advocating tracking in schools to identify any potential gains from this." And this is a guy that would be skeptical of it. And in his research, and all the other research, and Greg, I think you've been great about this, all the research indicates not every detracking effort has succeeded. That's the truth. Not every anything has succeeded. But the substantial evidence is that it does. So you just have to do it the right way, with appropriate supports and appropriate challenges and thorough rigor. And I have a lot of confidence that that is the path that we are pursuing at D200, and we will certainly ask about it. But it is, it is a real promising path for moving our whole school forward from an achievement and performance standpoint.
I would appreciate all of the work that you all did with the information sessions and watching the progression as you, I think it was very helpful. and watching the progression as you, I think it was very helpful for our community to see that their input was taken and that allowed for future presentations to become more informed based on that as well as the research and the data. And I would suggest Ralph, the resources that you suggested, that we, you know, we have on our site so that we have links to all the information. And the thing that keeps coming up for me, and it was mentioned earlier in a public comment about, you know, less rigor. I think that, I haven't read anything or talked to anyone that has implemented these types of efforts that's talked about less rigor. And I think it's counterintuitive to what we, our mission and goals are as a school, but also why we're undertaking this effort and what equity looks like. And so I think that as many times as we can say that not only is it not about, you know, a zero-sum game, but there, this is not mutually exclusive to have rigor and to have supports. And that the supports are directed at not remediation, but in the same way that we have students that take, it's complicated, and have a tutor. That we will provide the supports our students need to be successful in an equitable fashion. And I think as many times as we can talk about our work in that way and that's what we're trying to do, that's what I brought away from our discussions. And hearing some of the concerns, I think those are some of the things that we could perhaps not let on.
Yeah, I was going to agree with everything that you just said. I think not only the, I think giving as much information as possible that demonstrates how the curriculum is not being lessened in any way for the academic rigor. And like specifics though, as specific as we can be with the community. Because I, I feel that, as mentioned, that there is really a perception that in order for us to do this, we have to dumb things down. Like, I would like to use nicer words, but I don't have any nicer words for it because every time I hear someone say it in the nice words, what I hear is, oh, we need to dumb it down for those kids. So however, we have to really explicitly demonstrate that academics are not going to lose anything. I think that it's really, really a critical piece because there is a lack of understanding. And especially, and I get that, if you're not an educator and you're not in the system of education and you don't understand the, all of the framework of supports that would be involved, that it would, it would be very easy to make that assumption or to make that connection as an idea. I just want us to be as explicit as we can be. Because in, in reference to Ralph's great pieces of research that are there, all the research that we've seen nationally is, it's very clear that that is not part of what the process is. But there is such a misconception. So I really want us, I feel like as educators, our job is to educate and we're really needing to educate in this area.
The other?
I'll just, you know, I appreciated, like you mentioned, Jack, the evolution of how each session informed the next one. And I sensed a real genuine spirit of openness that Greg and Dr. Ferrer displayed to the skeptics and those expressing concerns. And I just would encourage us to continue that institutionally and individually because that's how we're going to grow and this will become better. And just in the short time, in the last two months since this was first announced, I feel like we are, you know, as a community, so much more further along the path into our understanding, for those who are really paying attention and want to see what this is and is not. And we're learning and we're not perfect. And so I appreciate from seeing, you know, Karen Sullivan and other people in the administration really stepping up and, you know, saying, hey, this is a journey. And, you know, we won't convince everyone. That's one of the things that, you know, we won't convince everyone of everything. So people think the earth is flat. Hopefully, not too many Huskies will graduate believing that, but so will, right? And so, so I think that's key, is the attitude going into it, the spirit of really saying, bring us these challenges, these concerns, not for us necessarily try to address every statistic because ultimately, it's the big picture. And locally, this is all, in a way, theory because we haven't done this yet. And so, anyway, so I'm really excited about the possibility. At the same time, not settling for wherever we're at, to continue to push and strive and to assimilate the things, the points that we think are valuable for us. So I'm interested to know, over time, how the teachers, ultimately, who are so key to all of this as well, how they take this. And I know that there's a plan for that. We got a plan for that. So, thank you.
If I could just, I think to echo Gina's point too, the circle of expectation idea of trying to bring up the community, but also our theater districts along, you know, the more dedicated parents now, the more we can help and help them inform other districts' actions, right? Because if we're really truly doing communication piece, then this will become a community groundswell and not just a district-wide thing.
I guess, just a point from my perspective. You know, I don't have the education background that maybe you here, nothing even close. But fundamentally, in my own experience, in my own life, and having lived in lots of places in the world and lived and had lots of opportunities, I've developed a principle that I learn a lot from other people. And the more diverse the set of people that I'm with, the more I'm able to learn. It's just as a fundamental basis. And how that translates to education and how that translates to the result of these studies, I don't know that. I mean, but I have that principle. But I also know that through this process, what I want to see is how do we ensure as much success as we can? What are the processes? What are the procedures? And I know that's not necessarily the purview of the board, but getting those right here is the key. So to me, the outcome, the way you get it from diversity and different types of inputs and putting our students in places where they see that, that's no question. But making sure that we put the right supports and then we build it in the right way that it's successful. And that's what I want to see through the process. And that's what I'm looking for.
I just have, this is America to me. When you said that, it reminded me of, I don't know what episode, but where the students in Jessica Snowball's English class were talking with one of the AP English teachers. And he said he doesn't have those types of rich discussions in his class. And mainly because it was a more homogeneous community. And one of the students pointed out to him, that's why our class works, is because we are able to bring so many different perspectives. So I concur. And I think that there's evidence from your kind of world experience. But I think our school has, our students have told us that as well.
So my N of five, which, you know, there's made, the experience is that the most impactful learning that my children had at this institution was in heterogeneous opportunities. I mean, it's, all AP, all kinds of wonderful educational experiences. But I can tell you the ones that, that's what they remember and talk to. So that's a personal impact that I see. And plenty of other, Greg, Gregor, but so.
What else on board? I didn't know, I don't know if you two want to make a comment before I paraphrase what we've heard?
You know, I want to say something, if I can, about the previous word. The fact that we have a Board of Education talking about Michael Fulham's research from a text that is edited by Pedro Noguera. It's something that I would never think I would see in education. So kudos to you all for the conversation you engaged. It was really something to see. So I seriously, I almost had goosebumps on that one. But there we go. So thank you very much.
I guess the only thing I will say is, we are crafting a very specific plan that we share with the staff on November 7th. It is specific to parameters of the pilot. It is specific to timelines as to when things are going to be accomplished, such as natural unit. There will be conversations in collaboration with Dr. Ammons reviewing the assessments and ensuring that we have looked at it through an equity lens. I will be a participant in that, ensuring that the rigor is there. So we have detailed everything out. We are working right now. I'm very excited about it. But I will unveil it because the teachers don't know about it yet. And I really want them to be the first to see it. But we are crafting the earned honors rubric that will be used across the divisions so that parents and students will know what to expect versus it's different in every place. It's going to be the same. It's going to be competency-based. It's going to be evidence-based. Students are going to be able to use the same rubric and tool to self-reflect. In addition to the teacher's reflection, they're going to be able to use this tool all along the way. And then, of course, the professional development plan is in the works. We've started meeting about it already. So we will have a hopefully two-year PD plan that begins with the top 10 things that the teacher said is most important to them. So we're going to start with those things so that they get what they need to feel accomplished and ready to do this work. So in meetings that I've been in with teachers in various curriculum meetings, the division heads, the instructional coaches, they're incredibly excited. They feel ready. Things are starting to unfold. So I think just the buzz in the building now is causing forward progress, probably quicker than I anticipated initially. But I am very, very happy and so I'll be excited to share that with you, the plan.
So I want to say what I heard from the board. Because we do want you to know that through this process, we are listening, looking to our community, listening to our board. We've heard that we need to continue the engagement with our community, being transparent and bringing them in along this journey with us for the feedback because this is impactful to their children. And we hear that. The other piece we heard is ensuring that we provide our staff with the adequate support, resources, and professional learning so that they can be the best educators for all of our children, whatever comes into their classroom. The other thing I heard is that the board is supportive. They see the need that all of our children are entitled, it is a right that they have, to a high-quality education with rigorous curriculum. And that it is our job to make sure that as we move forward, that we not only support our students who we're pushing up, but we also have to support the students who are also high-performing so that there are no losses. I do want to also echo Greg's sentiments that when I first joined the district, we talked about the challenges of facing the conversations around race and removing barriers for our children and making sure that all of our children have equal access and opportunity to a quality curriculum. And to see our board having the discussion that they had tonight around the book that they're reading, to look at your board goals that you will approve tonight, to hear you talk about this curriculum and the direction that we're going is, it is inspiring to know that we're not taking this journey alone without the support of our Board of Education. So on behalf of our students and our families, I just want to thank you. Then moving to the next item. The Illinois Association of School Board's resolution on student safety and protection. As you heard earlier in a public comment, that each year, the Illinois Association of School Board provides to the Board of Education members a resolution that will be presented to the delegate assembly. The meeting this year will be held on Saturday, November 23rd, 2019. The recommendation regarding student safety and protection is here. Our recommendation is for a discussion and next steps, an appointment of delegates with a direction from our board on how they should vote at the November 23rd meeting. And this is in compliance with District Policy Board colon 170.
Do we know if any of you are going to the meeting?
Right now, the members that, to my knowledge, that are going are you, Ms. Harris, and Dr. Martin, you're going to the conference? But Mr. Martire, your name is also down for going to the conference.
So the delegates could, the delegates?
You could be the delegate. I'm okay with that.
We have to spread the shared leadership.
I think presidentate ought to be the delegate.
Can we get through?
Yeah.
But now, do you want to talk about this?
We, Sarah, I'd like you to tee this up because you have been a passionate community member in terms of talking to our, not only the position of the board, but being anchor here in this community. And we reflect on these issues if you all know.
Sure. I am not entirely sure how you want me to tee it off, but I mean, in terms of...
Where are these fans?
I cannot, I don't, I cannot imagine ever supporting this resolution. I think it's bonkers.
That's all that technical prim law term. You break it down for us.
I mean, I don't know if that's what you want to do when they're, I mean, I just, you know, I know that our community is very rightfully passionate about this issue. I think all of America should be passionate about this issue. But I think that, you know, our community has been very clear that this is not something that we should be supporting as a school board. And I think I would love to hear from others if there's any contrary thinking. But I'm assuming we're all united and decide that teachers shouldn't have guns in schools.
Our teachers do not want guns.
Teachers don't want guns. I mean, talk about the liability issue, rightly.
Some major liability issue.
And I even think on the other side of Harlem Avenue, there's no interest in arming teachers. And so I know last...
What did you say, the other side of Harlem? What do you mean?
River Forest. The somewhat more conservative community than Oak Park. We passed a resolution unanimously at our board saying no to this and voting against it. And really, no one spoke up in favor of it at our meeting, but a number of folks came to speak against it. I, I can't imagine supporting this resolution. Just can't imagine.
So I just want to make clear from what I read in this is that it's not so much about whether we would want to arm our teachers or give them even the ability, that it's about whether we are supportive of statewide ability for any given district to move forward with that if they felt it was in their best interest in their community. And so, so that to me is different than what do we think individually for this community? And so for our community, so it's a two-step thing. The first step is if this were to pass, then this would be part of enabling some, and I'm saying this as a question, to enable legislation to preempt other laws that prohibit teachers and staff from being armed legally. And so, and then that would break it down to each district that would have the decision whether to trigger, for lack of a better verb, that ability, right? And so, so I think that's something to make sure that we're clear on because we got a number of emails, I don't know, five or 10 at least, from people saying, don't do this. We, you know, and the way that they were conveying it, it wasn't clear to me that they knew that nuance. And so I just want to make sure that I'm not mistaken, first of all. And number two, open up the dialogue. Because I know bonkers is a term that many people would think. And I think that's, I appreciate the plain-spokenness. I know, I'm not that far off from bonkers in my view of it. But so I just want, it's almost like this is a very, it's a north-south state with a lot of different density of population. And with the argument that's made by some is that they're so far away from any kind of law enforcement that this could make a big difference to have someone on staff armed. And so, so I'm, you know, I'm not persuaded that, you know, we should say yes necessarily to this resolution. But there are intelligent, well-intentioned people who have put this forth recommending to adopt it. And I think I would like to hear some more dialogue from others to see if anyone, you know, is of the mind to be supportive of this. So.
We have had extensive conversations about this at both the state and national level. Educators having this conversation. And although there is a small group of educators that would be open to someone being armed in the building, the general consensus has been that having any weapons in the building would lead to more fatalities. That would be an unnecessary piece. And so the general feel of what I can tell you and the general opinion, the surveys and the information that we've gathered, both state and nationally, is that educators do not want guns in the building. So for me, the idea that we would... educators do not want guns in the building. So for me, the idea that we would support it so that other locals could determine that for themselves, I feel as though I have enough evidence based on the data and research and conversations I've had with educators both statewide, including in southern parts of the state and nationally, to vehemently say that any gun in the building held by anyone presents a challenge. One of the things that came up in our conversation around this was, well, what if you have a retired officer who's trained to use a weapon and has the expertise for this? But part of the challenge that comes in with that is that that officer is retired. And so, the skill set has shifted after retirement. And not only that, it's the possibility of another, of a student getting their hands on a gun felt like it just was too much risk. It's just entirely too much risk to intentionally place a weapon in the building, no matter what kind of... Because the conversation then went into pieces about, well, what if it's in a secured place and it's locked up and everybody has access to it, all those. It just, there were so many things that even when playing the scenarios through, it was like having a gun in a building where there are students is a big no.
I mean, and one other piece I think to this is, you know, we've seen from police fatalities, right? Even highly-trained individuals make poor judgment calls, especially in high-stress situations. And I just, I can't even imagine a teacher thinking a student has a gun when a student has a cellphone, which we've certainly seen out in the world, and, you know, potentially killing one of our students. Like, I just, it's inconceivable to me that this would ever be a proven course of action, no matter where your district is located. It's just so bad. I think it's my responsibility to say that we vote no for this, I mean, statewide.
And we already have disproportionate data on discipline. So if we already have disproportionate data on discipline for black and brown students, one of the conversations that we were having at the NEA Black Caucus was what would happen in schools where the officers in the building are armed? Does that put our students even more at risk? So...
Officers or your teachers, right?
Well, no, if, because the idea, part of the idea of this is that an SROs, a cool resource officer would be the one that would be, you know, or whoever the hired person is, that would be representing that piece. Even then, there was the likelihood that that could increase the amount of incidences with students of color is great.
That's, I think, number three. This one is, you're talking about is number one right now with arming the teachers.
But that's, I was just going to go there because it's not a one, there's two, there's a multitude of issues that the delegates need to vote on. And so I appreciate Mary's comments on number three. When I was reading that, it said, you know, it almost sounded like, okay, we're going to try to do something. But I was on the fence. But I now am not in favor of number three, which is the student resource funding and support, that one. Coming back to that resolution number one, if it were, if it were to pass, our district then could still say no guns. But our students are not captive to our district. They go to other districts that we don't know what their policy and what their vote is. So, you know, it sounds ideal, you know, that we can still control our own destiny, but we don't live in a cocoon. We have other, you know, they go to, our students go to a sporting event in a different district. Do we need to, oh, that's a district that they, you know, they, the teachers have guns in? So again, it's just another, you know, that's why I'm opposed as it is, even with our own ability to choose our own district-wide destiny.
I was going, I agree with what Time just said in my bigger, and everything Gina said, by the way. It is such a bad idea that as a school board member, as a value statement coming from the school board I serve on, I would prefer our value statement to say, we think it's such a bad idea. It ought not be the law of the land that it could be, it could be a practice by choice because we think it's a bad choice. And it can, and it has so many downsides to it. So as a value statement as a board, I would, my personal view is I would not be in favor of supporting either one or three.
I think the vote on the 23rd is for one.
My understanding is both.
No, it's both.
Oh, it's both. Yes. Isn't there two also?
So where, where do we stand with our school resource officer?
Our school resource officer is an actual police officer. So I think we are covered there.
Okay, Miss Jeffries. No, no, no. I'm just saying that that is where I get to Matt's point about we can vote no on something because we have a police officer where other districts may not have those resources. So that one, I completely agree, but I think we have to be clear that as we're saying that, you know, I don't know if you're allowed to make amendments to resolutions, but then be a active, you know, if you are going to have a school resource officer. And I'm not clear from the language of number three, if they're talking about active. Okay. So we know how, we are all agreed that it is one and three, we're no. And Gina, how many, do we get two? Would this be a poll?
You're going to enjoy being a delegate, Jackie.
I'm a delegate already.
I think you wear a hat.
Nina or Ralph, please tell me that which one you'd like to be a delegate.
I nominate Gina. Thank you for doing that.
I get to wear the hat?
Yes.
I look good in hats.
Since my remarks may have made it a little vague, I wanted to hear more discussion on it. I agree. I'm in, I'm in step with your views. It's a complicated thing. And so anyhow, so I appreciate your comments and insights.
Okay. So we know how we're, and is there a communication that we could, to Ralph's point?
We can put something out in terms of communication. And if you want to send us some of the little verbiage you said, we can add that.
That's your job now.
Everyone is always telling me to shut up.
That's right. It was the essence of what you said.
And just to that point, I did receive some postcards written by, looks like students. I'm making a guess here. It looks like student handwriting. That could be an horrible thing to do, but, but in opposition to those things. So I will, it's in their handwriting, their work. So pass it around so people can take a look at the thoughts of our students.
So it's opposition to what we're also opposing. So they're insisting that...
Right. They're urging us to oppose the resolution. Okay.
That concludes all of the discussion items. Before you go into the action item, we are pulling number three, approval of settlement agreement regarding these.
So our first action item, I move to approve a doctor of the Board of Education goals.
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion?
What is that?
No.
That was a new one.
It's kind of squinting. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Oh, there's M's and T's. Nothing for me. Too many consonants.
He's proofreading. Okay. So we can call it off.
Mr. Martyri?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Ms. Spivey?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Eisler?
Yes.
And Dr. Moore?
Yes. And now I move to approve the superintendent employment agreement for the 2019, 20 through 21, 22 school year as discussed in closed session and to be finalized and executed by the parties and ask for a second.
Second.
Questions, Tom?
I think it was the years you were mentioning. Oh, right. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Believe me. Got it. Sorry. I think I need a break. I need four minutes. Okay?
Mr. Eisler?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Martyri?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Ms. Spivey?
Yes.
And Dr. Moore?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. After that thing?
No.
Okay. So we are, so D moved to dismiss Timothy Fisher as a tenured faculty member and adopt resolution authorizing dismissal and issuance of notice of charges and hearing rights based on inappropriate relationship and conduct with district students as discussed in closed session and ask for a second.
Second.
Mr. Martyri?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Eisler?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Kowski?
Yes.
Ms. Spivey?
Yes.
And Dr. Moore?
Yes.
Okay. And we have our information items for your perusal. And future agenda items, there was the one, Ralph.
The development or the, you know, bring forward of what our sustainability actions are and that more discussion about how we monitor that policy. And that would fall right in with our construction work, which is, it's a great time to do it.
Okay. Any other items?
Oh, she knew it, Jerry. No, no, not yet. Well, we've got the district community and state reports midnight. Oh, we said, well, just a quick mention, my regular mention of the I-Gov meeting is now moved to possibly the 16th of November or the 23rd of November, pending availability. So, yeah. So you all got tentative notes from Gail earlier tonight because that's where it's at. So just hold on loosely. Don't let go.
The 23rd is the Triple A Conference, of which Mr. Martyri and Ms. Harris and Dr. Moore are in.
I appreciate that mention.
Don't forget Harris.
So the 23rd or the 16th, it may still become the 23rd based on all the other bodies in town, but that's a good point. I'll make sure they know that the 16th would be preferable. So hang on, hold on loosely.
I think we ought to add I-Gov to our email list. It sounds like they operate the same way.
Touche.
I still move to adjourn.
All in favor? Thanks.